Well, it's been awhile since I've been on this YouTube channel here. Um, this is a little bit different. This is my Twitch stream. And I decided to go over live on something pretty fun. Not really fun, but interesting anyway. So, this is Mikey Taylor. If you've been a fan of skateboarding as long as I have, you've heard of Mikey Taylor. Mikey Taylor used to be a professional skateboarder. He got his original start on City Stars and then moved over to Alien Workshop eventually, uh, doing something, I think the name of the brand that he did after that was called Sovereign. Looks like if one of the Easter Island heads went to community college for a business degree. Well, I mean, look at the guy. So right here, Useless Wooden Knowledge is an Instagram account. It's also a game. I believe it's Daniel Shimizu runs this account. And he brought something to my attention on his Instagram story yesterday. I was not expecting to talk about this today at all. I just thought we were gonna watch more skateboarding, which we do three times a week on my Twitch channel. But let's go into this little thing here. So if you, in your mind, have an image of baggy pants and cornrows when you think of Mikey Taylor, this is a bit of a shock. He's running for city council in Thousand Oaks, California. Yeah, he had cornrows. If you watched the, his ender in Bloom, which I think is actually one of his only like sick clips. He, he has cornrows in that clip. So, one thing about Mikey Taylor that a lot of people know is that he is a real estate agent. Um, he owns his own investment group. A lot of people have an issue with housing, uh, right now because it's an essential resource, which is something that I kind of agree with as well. It depends on like certain areas and stuff like that. I don't necessarily think that there being such a thing as like houses that are expensive that people can get is necessarily a bad thing, but you should have plenty of affordable housing. And big companies like this buying up that housing is very bad. And he's a part of that whole thing. So this kind of thing brings up uh, what his politics are in pretty general sense through his website, which we're gonna go through a little bit deeper later. He seems to be, when it comes to somebody who's gonna run for a city council, a pretty straightforward, normal guy. He wants to boost small businesses. He's pro clean air, which I think you kind of have to be if you just are a politician in California. I think it's just kind of required if you want to have any amount of people vote for you in any capacity. Public safety, which unfortunately in a lot of situations just means more policing, which sucks for the majority of people actually. So digging deeper. Mikey is, I believe, running as a Republican. I don't know if there's any official sources on this. But given the other information that we are going to find out later, if he was not running as a Republican, that really wouldn't make any sense. Now, Mikey is actually a member of the God Speak Cavalry Chapel, which is led by a pastor named Rob McCoy. If you look here, this is a thread on Twitter from Canejo Valley Anti-Fascists talking about how he uh, was kind of, they use the word groomed. This is a stream, this is a YouTube channel where essentially Mikey Taylor talks on a fireside chat with Pastor Rob McCoy. Pastor Rob McCoy is a co-chair of Turning Point Faith, which is the Christian area of Turning Point USA, which is run by Charlie Kirk, who is a man who I believe does not need any introduction whatsoever. Charlie Kirk, while being the runner of Turning Point USA, is also the co-founder of the Falkirk Center for Faith and Liberty, along with Jerry Falwell Jr., who, if you look up anything about that guy, is pretty extreme. Just more general, just horrible things that Charlie Kirk has said. You don't have to do much research on this guy to figure out how much of a dickbag he is really. Uh, horribly racist. Horribly, I mean, here's a pretty good example of Islamophobia. You know, the, if you log onto his Twitter right now, it doesn't matter. If you find this video 10 years after it's posted and you go to Charlie Kirk's Twitter, if he's still alive and Twitter still exists, I promise you, he's said something horrible recently. So yeah, basically, long story short, through these connections, the person at this church that Mikey Taylor speaks at, basically, uh, has connections to all these people. And I don't think it takes more than two brain cells to rub together to realize that somebody who hangs out with these types of people generally doesn't disagree with them, especially on those sorts of topics. Because I feel like people who are of a more left perspective when it comes to racism, homophobia, sexism, transphobia are very strong in their thoughts on those topics. They're not going to surround themselves with people who disagree with them unless those people are like family members. Uh, this pastor as well that Mikey Taylor has been hanging out with is anti-abortion and anti-gay marriage. Probably anti-trans as well. I mean, like that all kind of seems to lump in together. So he, McCoy, this pastor, resigned from the Thousand Oaks City Council in 2020. And it was because he believed he needed to step down because his religious beliefs were in conflict with his sworn oath to uphold state and local law. That is actually something, however, I can respect. This is something that you're not going to see very many politicians do at a high level. You might see it happen at a local level. But at like a high level, like a House Representative or a Senator or a Governor or fuck it, even the President, is not going to let their personal beliefs and their personal life pull them away from their job. Because they wanna hold it. They want the money. But at this low of a level, people will actually pull back. But he decided to actually run again this year for some reason. But then he changed his mind because he wanted to handpick Mikey himself to be the candidate for the seat in the city council of Thousand Oaks. Which yeah, I mean, like all this, it's far-right, white, Christian nationalism. It's, it, I know that like these big terms like this are something that when people who are like right-wing see these big words and like something like this, they're like, ah, well, you know, no. Through what we've gone through, Mikey being handpicked by a guy who works with someone who denies that the election was won by Joe Biden and he himself is also anti-abortion and anti-gay marriage, you have to assume that if somebody's handpicked by that guy, he thinks at least similarly in some fashions. And this is another good point. It's only city council for now. A lot of these politicians get their start being a city council member or something at this low of a level. Very few people in politics actually start at being like a governor or a senator or a House Representative. It very rarely happens, except for like Donald Trump. And yeah, just like with, with, I believe this is Daniel Shimizu who runs this account. Anyone in Thousand Oaks who might end up seeing this, do not vote for Mikey Taylor. This is Mikey's response to Useless Wooden Knowledge. I watched that whole story. The only thing you mentioned that I've ever said and done is about real estate. That part we have a different opinion on. Those are my views. Anything else you mentioned had nothing to do with me. All other people. Which at face value seems like a valid point. However, like I said, most people who are pro-trans, pro-gay, pro-abortion are not going to work together with people who disagree with them. They're usually not coy and shy about those beliefs. They're usually pretty straightforward about them because they see injustices happening to the people that they're wanting the liberation for all the time. Useless Wooden Knowledge, "Do you disavow your pastor's views?" He replies with, "Where you and I completely agree is that racism is wrong, sexism is wrong. Anytime you treat someone bad because of an immutable trait is wrong. And you put in there that I am a white Christian nationalist. I am not." Well, the thing is, is that he did say it. However, the big things about Rob McCoy is that he is anti-gay and anti-abortion, which is not a part of Mikey's answer. The thing is, is that a lot of Republicans right now are not going to be openly racist or sexist a lot of the time. And the reason why is because it looks bad because there are black Republicans, there are female Republicans. So them, so a white Republican man saying something bad about women or black people is going to cause uproar even within their own community. So they tend to not do it publicly because it is a bad look even within their own party. And then I actually looked up this thing. Uh, this could be why Mikey's getting into politics in the first place. This is the last slide of this highlighted story, by the way. Um, and I looked up this Forbes article. We have it right here. So, "No fooling, California Wants to discourage private investment in housing." This was actually posted on April 1st of this year. That's why it says no fooling and it starts with, here's a funny little April Fool's Day joke. Let's penalize people with a 25% tax when they invest in buying a house. "The Left Has Officially Embraced the Idea of Supply and Demand, at least for gasoline, but not so much for housing. When it comes to housing, rising prices are not connected to rising demand and supply, not keeping up with that demand. Rising prices are caused by greed, and when an investor decides to seek a return from building, selling, or renting housing, it is perceived by many on the left as theft. Housing shouldn't be an investment, and when it is and the person who made the investment makes a return, it should be punished." At least that's the premise of legislation recently proposed in California by Assembly Member Chris Ward. He calls the California Speculation Act. "We've heard of people getting into their first home, getting beat by cash offers from investors," Ward said at a news conference Wednesday at the San Diego County Administration Center. "Those investors typically resell the properties soon afterward at inflated prices, stoking competition for limited housing and driving up market prices for comparable homes." Well, when you own a real estate firm, of course, the state that you do your work in placing limits on what you're doing is something that you're probably not going to stand for because you wanna make more money. So this is a very possible reason why Mikey would even be interested in being a politician in the first place. "Ward's solution of imposing a punitive tax on people who sell in less than seven years will simply penalize people for various reasons, who for various reasons need to sell in that period of time." Yeah, I mean, like there is a slight problem with this law and that is there. That like there might be a reason why somebody has to move within a certain time period and they're not doing it just to flip the house, but it's something that I think can be worked out. But Mikey wants to work it out by challenging it entirely. And now we have a website. Mikey Taylor for City Council. Oh, there is a video. Grab my headphones. We're gonna watch this. It's on Vimeo.
Where we live and the places we spend our time help shape who we become. For me, this was Thousand Oaks. When I was young, I didn't really think much about the impact my community would make on me.
Look at baby Mikey. Oh my God. Oh my goodness gracious.
Kind of seemed like my parents chose to live here and I was just along for the ride. Looking back, there were some very significant events that would help mold the man I would become. The first one being skateboarding. Every day after school, we would all meet at Borchard Park. That was one of the few places where we were able to skate and it actually kept a lot of us out of trouble. As teenagers, we were trying to figure out who we were and skateboarding helped bring out some of those undiscovered qualities. I learned about delayed gratification because skateboarding took so long to land a trick that I learned what it felt like to stick with something. I became resilient.
Okay, I still, oh man. Oh. This is so hard to watch. I've only been watching 45 seconds? Oh my God.
resilient in my outlook of failure and I started looking at the world through a very creative lens. Little did I know, this would be the beginning of what would turn into a long and successful career as a pro skateboarder. I started
Creative. His voice is grating? Yeah, as somebody who probably also has an extremely grating voice, I would rate this one pretty low. To be fair, if he put it on YouTube, he'd have the entire slap forums in his comments. Yeah, that's the thing. There is a slap thread on this and I refrained from looking at it just because it's slap. If you notice, whenever I make like a full video on like a skate video, I will always say that if something comes from slap, to take it with a grain of salt. I always operate under the impression that it's real. But I'm willing to be proven wrong. That's how you have to operate with slap-related things. So I just didn't wanna touch it at all. Also, yes, I will say when it comes to Mikey Taylor skateboarding, there are only two clips that I think I've ever really cared about with his skating. Uh, and I think they're both the enders to his parts. Uh, the Nolly Flip Nose Slide Down, uh, that big hubba in Bloom, which I believe is his ender. And like, that I only care about because like that hubba still exists and people still skate it, but they're doing way easier tricks on it and it looks way bigger. How did Mikey make that look so small, like 20 years ago? And then, um, I think he does a front shove to front crook in Skate More and I think that that's really cool. But literally every other clip of this guy I could have done without. And this was even my opinion before, uh, finding out any of this information. So it's not like this is what caused me to not like him. I just never really cared about him, even though he was in one of the first skate videos I ever owned.
Started getting highlighted on covers of magazines, traveling the world, and also was able to buy my first house at 22 years old.
Buying your first house at 22 years old, by the way, is not something that skateboarding automatically guarantees you. It does, it's not something that anything on this planet guarantees you. It's definitely, you are in a very affluent situation. And I'm sure he knows this, but there's a lot about the housing market that I feel like somebody like him doesn't quite understand. And it's the part that like, everybody needs somewhere to live. Not just people who are looking to having a house as an investment, but they're actually looking into having a house as like a necessity.
A week before I closed Escrow, I ran into my neighbor who was home from college on her Christmas break. I saw her out run. I asked her out to dinner and this would become another impactful moment in my life because years later, we would get married. One thing that I was and still am attracted to in my wife is how smart and driven she is. She has a bachelor's degree from Point Loma. She got an additional degree from FIDM in interior design, which led to her ultimately creating her first design studio. We used to stay up at night talking about business and it was actually her who encouraged me to create my first business outside of the skateboarding industry.
Could you imagine having a conversation with your partner about business before going to bed? Holy shit, what a boring conversation. Oh my God. Can you imagine going to bed with Mikey Taylor? No. You and I talk straight gibberish. Yeah, it usually is pretty much gibberish. Oh yeah, no. This ad, oh, it's only three minutes long. We'll be fine. I didn't know they made race car beds for married couples. I don't know why I'm doing this video. Threes would be way better at roasting this guy than I am, which he clearly has been the whole time I've been recording this.
In 2012, two of my friends and I started a craft brewery called St. Archer. We didn't have enough money to start the company between the three of us. So we went out, created a business plan, raised two and a half million dollars in a seed round to launch our business.
It's a craft beer. It probably tastes like grass.
Once we opened doors, we quickly
I hate P-Rod too. P-Rod honestly, I think is a pretty good skateboarder. I might not like, like his like personality or anything like that. But like honestly, him as a skateboarder, I, I, I can't deny that I actually really enjoy his skateboarding. Has any face ever needed to be punched more than that face? I don't know. Have you seen Ben Shapiro's face? I think it's much more punchable than P-Rod's.
Quickly became one of the fastest-growing breweries in California, which eventually
Obvious weeb though, so many damn anime collabs. I'm gonna, I'm gonna break your mind with this. I don't think Paul Rodriguez Jr. watches any anime. I think he likes making money and knows that like there are a lot of skateboarders and there are a lot of weeb's who like to collect things that want those boards. There's an idea. Cause it's all, it's all Sailor Moon. It's all, um, Naruto. It's all that kind of stuff. It's all the mega-popular ones. Like he's not gonna do something with like a, like a, if you know, you know type anime.
Led to the sale of our company to Miller Coors. From there, I
Miller Coors. Talk about two, just the most white beers ever. Fuck Megadeth. Yeah, I feel like if they were gonna be the metal band that does a collab with like a kinda hip-hop based skate brand, it was gonna be Megadeth. At least when Slayer did a collab, it was with Indy and Misfits doing a collab with Zero. Like those are much better collabs because they actually work with the companies. Have you ever met anyone who wrote a primitive deck IRL? Yeah, I see quite a few primitive decks at the locals. Granted, they are typically worn by the, the kids who feel the need to wear ultra-baggy pants and just whatever is currently in, but yeah, I see them. Never seen one in my entire life. Oh, completely off topic. I saw my first pair of Kariumas in the wild today. And they were not being worn on a skateboarder. Uh, they were being worn uh, by an old man, very old man, like in his seventies. Oh my God, that is so awesome that we, we ended up like within the same like timeframe of being away from streams, seeing a pair of Kariumas. Definitely not a skater. I have never seen a pair of Kariumas at a skate park or a skate shop once, since they've launched. I've only ever seen them in real life at like a Zoomies, whenever I've like stopped in one, whenever I've been at a mall for whatever reason. I just stop in to kind of laugh at shit. Skate shop, carrying, carry, why? Oh yeah, no. I've only seen them on the shelf at Zoomies. I've never seen a human being wearing them.
I started a private equity real estate firm called Commune Capital. The company's purpose is doing good by doing well.
Doing good by doing well? America is great because America is good.
Educating our community on finance through social media and working to leave a lasting impact in the cities which we build or improve infrastructure. All of that was the easy part. The hardest and most rewarding thing in my life is being a dad. I have ten and seven-year-old girls, my son is two, and we're expecting a new one any day. And they are the main reason why I'm running for city council. Because my wife and I are choosing to raise our kids in the community which we grew up in. We are working hard to instill the values that we had growing up and we want them to be positively impacted like we were from their community. Enjoying open spaces and parks to always feel safe when they're out. We want them to be inspired to create, to know the owners of the shops they go to.
See, I can respect wanting to have a safe community for your kids. However, I don't know if Mikey Taylor realizes that most of the time when a Republican politician says that they want their cities safe, that is code words for, "We want the cops to harass black people." I don't think he quite gets that.
And to ultimately wanna work or start business here in Thousand Oaks with the ultimate goal of raising their kids in our community. This is a goal that many of us parents have and I am the perfect person who shares our Thousand Oaks values and also has the skillset to lead our city in the right direction.
Now, doesn't that just make you wanna go out and vote? Oh my God. Yeah, it's, it's, it's horrible, man. Like, this is not good. I don't think he's that dumb. Alright, let's, let's read this shit. "Serial entrepreneur and former professional skateboarder Mikey Taylor is the president and managing principal of Commune Capital, a private equity real estate firm. He was born and raised right here in the Caneo Valley, graduating from Newbury Park High School. He became fascinated with skateboarding at an early age and went on to participate in numerous high-level competitions such as the X Games." Let's take a look at that X Games history, shall we? Official athlete biography. Oh, would you look at that? There it is. Uh, X Games medal count. Uh, gold, zero. Silver, zero. Bronze, zero. Best finish, sixth. Yeah, I think we can all assume that he was like, just like a pretty normal, average skateboarder. Uh, yeah. And the only reason why he made, uh, any of these finals, by the way, is because they were street league format. "After a successful 14-year skateboarding career, Mikey began the transition into entrepreneurship and business building with St. Archer Brewery." Yeah, he talked about this in the thing, blah, 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 blah. Look, man, the point is, what the fuck? That's all I have to say is what the fuck? Kareem Campbell is one of my favorite skaters of all time, but I'm removing him from my top 10 for not beating up Mikey Taylor. We talked about this yesterday, yeah. I feel like legitimately the thing about Mikey Taylor is that um, if somebody would have beat him up when he was a kid, oh, it's funny. We have a tweet. We have a tweet. "I used to run my mouth as a kid." Well, how old are you now, Mikey? Mikey Taylor, 40 years old. Forty years is a long time to be a child because you still run your mouth. Until I got punched in the face for the first time. Then I thought twice the next time I felt the urge. This is happening now in the stock and crypto market. He turned getting beat up into something about cryptocurrency, which literally makes him like one of the worst people ever. Here's a question that I have. Who's to blame for people like Mikey Taylor? Well, I think something that's at the forefront for the blame for Mikey Taylor is the Nine Club. Not necessarily the people in it themselves, even though they are friends with Mikey Taylor, but the type of attitude that people like them have about skateboarders. The Nine Club is hot trash. I agree. Every time that I have to watch one of their interviews in order to get more information on like a skate video for one of my videos, it's sitting through just some dogshit a lot of the time. But I want, I want the full information of what I can find publicly without spending like 15 bucks on a bunch of copies of old Thrashers and then ending up being like 200 bucks per video. Marby's interview is probably fine. But my thing about the Nine Club and the mentality that this has is that it's this like bubble where everybody who's ever ridden a skateboard ever is cool. And I hate that. Because if everybody's good, that's just another way of saying that nobody is. If everybody who's ever gotten sponsored and turned pro is just really cool and deserves our support, no matter what. Then you create, it, it, there's no reason to have like a favorite skater. There's no reason to have a favorite brand. There's no reason for any of that stuff. It wa- it really is because like there are certain people, like when Mark Obla went on there and actually said some like positive things about Gator. We don't need that shit. We don't need to give Jason Jesse a platform. We don't need any of that. And while I understand that that's maybe not what they are trying to do, they don't push back whenever they interview certain people. It's, it's not good. And whenever they have certain people, they champion behind people who are their friends. And mainly I think it's because they're afraid. They all still have connections in the industry or they're still sponsored. They're friends with these people. And they don't want to push anyone the wrong way or make them dislike them in any way. And then we end up with this like endless cycle of dick sucking where everyone's awesome and it turns into this. And I'm just like not cool with it. But yeah, I wonder if because Chris Roberts is both friends with Daniel Shimizu and Mikey Taylor, if the Nine Club is even going to talk about any of this shit. I would be completely not surprised at all if they just did not bring it up. And then like, Mikey loses the election or whatever. And then like a few months after that, they have him on like a stop and chat again, or as a special guest on the Nine Club Experience or something like that. It would not surprise me one bit. So this is Saturday, October first that I am recording. I am back again. Uh, in the same segment. Uh, when I ended the stream on Thursday, recording the segment of things that you just watched, uh, I did not know that any of this stuff happened. So, this is a post from Useless Wooden Knowledge, which is the Instagram account that posted the story that we looked at. And this is letting everybody know that Daniel Shimizu, who I was originally giving credit for that story, uh, did not post this. Neither did Clint Peterson or Justin Strubing. It was somebody whose name is Andreas. I think he's maybe an intern or something like that for Useless Wooden Knowledge, but he posted that whole story on the Useless Wooden Knowledge account. But he is standing behind what he wrote completely, which good. Because of all of this. And also Clint Peterson, who is on this and was in Useless Wooden Knowledge. He says, I'm officially retired from doing the skate trivia. So he's no longer going to be, uh, posting on the Useless Wooden Knowledge account. Um, which my thought on that is, he, he didn't, he doesn't like the fact that this was a call out and that it was like, just like politically motivated in any way, shape or form. He's not saying that he disagrees, but he's just saying that he doesn't want to, that he just wants to like distance himself from like the call out behavior and, and all that kinda stuff. Well, and yeah, that's, to some extent, yes, I, I do see it that way. But I also do understand like after something like this happens, maybe wanting to distance yourself from any flack because you weren't involved. But whatever. So we have Mikey Taylor, his official Instagram account. Uh, he posted this video here. Um, going over this whole situation. And we're gonna watch it.
So this skate account posted all this stuff about me yesterday. Uh, basically calling me a fascist and a alt-right, white conservative nationalist.
Right off the bat, um, nobody I think used the word fascist or used the term alt-right. So, it was kind of maybe some tangential words, some similar words, some words that aren't necessarily synonyms, but are kind of lumped into the same category were used. But alright.
Um, I didn't know who the account was. I found out today. It's actually people I know, which makes us a bummer.
Well, we actually found out that that was not people that he knows. Uh, it was it's just some guy named Andreas, who we aren't really able to find the identity of. There's a post that I saw when you opened this, that where he clarified that. Okay.
Um, Justin Strubing, Daniel Shimizu, Clint Peterson, and the, the other person I, I don't know. Um, are who run this account. Uh, the bummer about it, these are people that I used to look up to. I watched them in the movies when I just was learning how to skate.
Yeah. I mean, like I, I get that. But in the same sort of lane is like from where they got their information and what they said, like they're pretty convicted people in their beliefs.
I bumped into him when we were both, when we all had our careers. I wasn't close with them, but anytime I met with them or saw them, it was cool. So, you know, what I wish is they would have actually reached out to me and went, what is this? Uh, and got my perspective, but.
Again, it wasn't them that said any of this stuff. It was the person that you don't know.
It's out there. It is what it is. And I'm basically gonna address it. So, I'm running for city council. Uh, city council for most people is pretty boring. It's land use, uh, budgets, contracts, it's bas- basically the business of the city. Uh, all the like big political talking points that are like pretty charged and have a lot of people like this, they're, they're not in play here.
I, again, I understand where that's coming from, but where do you think anybody who is like, uh, yeah, exactly. It's, it's bullshit. It's, well, right. But even if that were the case, like, where do you think people who become governors, senators, House Representatives, presidents, where do you think they come from? They don't just all of a sudden, except for Donald Trump, uh, just fall into the position of being a high level politician.
The reason why I wanted to run for city council was kind of two parts. One, this is where I grew up. This is where I've been this whole time and I love living here. And there's three things that kind of we're facing and I wanted to get involved to try to fix them. One is our water management. The other is a rise in homelessness. And the, the last one is a rise in crime.
A rise in crime. Mikey, you do realize that this is a massive conservative talking point. Rise in crime, when we are talking about Republican politicians means black people.
Uh, those three things is where I wanted to put my energy to, to try to help so that, you know, this city remains really cool. Um,
Really cool. Yeah, doesn't that just make you wanna vote for him? Yeah, it's a suburb. It's like, I don't remember what city it's a part of. Every city in California is the same city.
The other reason is that it's nonpartisan. It, it, it's, I, I, I think I can go in there and actually help and that's basically it.
Well, the thing is, is that the position, the position may in and of itself be nonpartisan. But you are not. There's no such thing as a nonpartisan person. One thing that if you get to know me and you get to know like my politics at all, one reason that centrists make me so mad is because they're lying about what they are politically, completely. Because no person is directly in the middle. There's at least something that brings them to one side or the other, something that only that side thinks. Whenever somebody's, says that they're a centrist, pay attention to when they get mad. If they get mad because things show a more left-leaning perspective than a right-leaning one, they're a conservative. They're not a centrist. And seeing that this guy cares about crime so much and is a, being backed by a very right-wing individual, it's safe to say that he believes very similar things. I just Googled Thousand Oaks crime. And the most recent article is from ten days ago. Is it Mikey Taylor? But to, yeah, that's about, yeah. Maybe he, maybe Mikey, even though he's from California, is like the rest of America. And thinks that Los Angeles is every city in California. So he thinks about the crime rate in California or in Los Angeles and thinks, huh, I gotta stop that in my city.
What I'm dealing with now in this is something I wasn't expecting. So I'll just go over basically what they're accusing me of, what my beliefs are, and maybe that will give this some transparency. So the first thing, uh, they basically came after me for real estate. Uh, they, they kind of mentioned in the beginning, anyone who owns real estate is evil. So on this one, we have a different opinion.
Oh my God. See, this is the thing is like, he's just talking like a conservative. That's not using a word like evil to describe an entire group of people from your perspective, is a conservative talking point. You're not helping your case by saying that. Cause when there were like conservatives on the internet, calling like pro-abortion, um, Democrat politicians, like baby killers and all that kinda stuff. Did, did Barack Obama or Joe Biden like say like indirect things like, all these people are just calling me a murderer? And like, no, no, they don't talk, like it's only conservatives that do this.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that. I think someone will always own real estate. I just think it's either us or the government. And I would rather it be us than the government. It's that simple.
The problem with that is though, is that if private companies own all of the real estate and there isn't any way, yeah, the government is us. We're a democracy. And not only that, when it's these private companies like this that own the real estate, they're hiking up the prices. That's what these companies are doing. All they're doing is turning something that is supposed to be, right, it's a public sector. When you make something that is supposed to be a necessity for human beings, when you make it an asset, it just fucks over people who aren't rich or aren't well off at least, which is bad.
Now, that doesn't mean there's no problems in real estate. Like, yes, do you have landlords out there that suck? You do. Uh, are we having a problem with single family right now? We are. Uh, but that doesn't mean the concept of private property and the ability to own real estate is wrong. That's just some, some examples of it being bad. But there we do have a difference of opinion.
See, but the thing is, is that, yeah. Right. I don't care about, yeah, exactly. I don't care about somebody owning things. I don't care about people owning things in and of itself. It's the kind of mentality that people like him have behind like owning property. And the way that these companies kinda go about, uh, uh, obtaining said property. It's not necessarily in and of itself, like, oh, well, you bought a house from like these people. It's like, yeah, I had the money to buy that house. Like that person necessarily isn't evil, but like the company behind it very well could be.
Uh, the alt-right, white, Christian nationalist, I didn't know what this was. Actually had to look it up.
This, I, I don't believe you. You use Twitter every day. And that, well, not every day, but you tweet. His Twitter is not inactive. He does have quite a few tweets from this year. How does he not know what any of these turn, terms mean? You do believe that? Really? He probably lives in a bubble where they aren't using terms like Christian nationalism, libertarian crypto bros. Well, I don't know if they're necessarily libertarian, but they're definitely like liberals for sure. They're, they're at least in a, in a belief system that like keeps their money intact anyway. And they have to act like kind of woke in some instances about like social related things, I guess. So like, that's kinda why I put them in the liberal ca- category. Oh no, be, well, it's because they all live in like suburban California.
Uh, the definition I got, uh, America is for people like us. So that's not the def- definition, but definition. Ethnically or culturally white conservative Christians. So that's what they want America to be, is only culturally white conservative Christians. Uh, no, that's not what I believe. Uh, not at all. Uh, exact opposite. So the thing that makes us special in America is that we have freedom of religion, freedom of speech. That means you get to believe in whatever you want or not believe in anything. And we have the ability to all live together. Uh, the other thing is about speech. How this was special, I'll talk about, about this on the end because I think we need to get back to it. We used to be able to talk to each other. And when people had different opinions, the conversation was always able to flow. And then all of us together got to live in America, being individuals with different ideas and in this case, different faiths. So on that notion, no, I am not that. I, I, I do not believe in that.
Yeah, no, exactly. A lot of the time, I don't think he realizes that like these things don't really help because like, to the eyes of a conservative believing in whatever you want literally just translates to being a Christian, being able to, they only like it when it's like talking about like their own faith. And yeah, the freedom of speech is basically like I'm allowed to say slurs. I'm not saying that that's what I think Mikey is for the record. I'm just saying the way that he's explaining things. I think he doesn't realize that they're like semi-tangentially like dog whistles in certain ways. Um, like crime rate, freedom of speech. Right. I, I don't think he's a Christian nationalist, but he's getting a lot of money from one. And that's something that needs to be talked about.
The other one is they said that I was a fascist.
Did they? I have to go back. I have to go back and see if anybody used the word fascist. Cause I don't think they did. I didn't anyway. Cause I, I, I don't actually think he is. That it was an, oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, fascist was actually one that I had to look up the definition of.
I, that's scary. That he did not know the definition of fascist. Because I know the definition of fascist because I paid attention in my US history classes. Somebody being a politician in the United States of America, yeah. If the entire other like half of this segment, yeah, he's too dumb to vote for. Maybe he's not. That was my whole thing too, is like everybody, or like you were saying that like, oh, well, there's, he, he does know all these things about real estate and he does know all these things. I don't think he does. I actually do take him to be that dumb. Because he doesn't know the definition of the word fascist, which basically is just posting your own L's and saying, I didn't pay attention when we studied history when I was in high school. Then again, he's a skateboarder. So is this really that surprising?
Um, I always thought it was basically a dictator and, and evil, kind of Hitler Nazi style. Um,
Well, that's a great example of them. That's not all of them. You can believe in a, in fascism as system of government without actually being a dictator yourself. But it's the gist of things, yes.
Definition I got, uh, a political movement that employs the principles and methods of fascism. Uh, especially the ones established by Mussolini in Italy nineteen twenty-two to nineteen forty-three, uh, to carry on to Mussolini. Mussolini said, all is in the state and nothing human exists or has value outside of the state. So it's basically all resources of the individual in the industry come together and are controlled by the state. So it's a state-controlled kind of nationalism. Uh, no, I do not believe in that. That's, that's- Uh, no, I do not believe in that. That's that's that actually goes against everything that I talk about on the real estate side. And to give you more context to my actual belief, I don't like big government. I actually like small government and.
Oh, my God. More conservative talking points. This would be like if I just said, yeah, no, I'm not racist, but I I think that there should be. Uh, somebody like Derek Chauvin at every corner of every street. Oh, my God. He, yeah, no, he really is.
I like the individual and trying to build up the individual as opposed to. Uh, I I don't like the collective or group think, uh. That is.
Oh, group think. Oh, my God. He's just using conservative words. He's just still using conservative words. Oh, my God.
Just something that I don't subscribe to. I like an individual and their thoughts, and if somebody else says something, I don't think. Myself or you have to think that way. So on fascism, no, I don't want a dictator and I don't want the state to control. Uh, our individual rights or anything else for that matter. Uh, the last thing. This kind of goes into my personality and I think for some people this is hard. But, uh, I made the decision to not let this change me and just try to be as authentic as possible, and this is the real me.
Oh, no. This is gonna be a whole like this is an attack on my character thing. The it, this is the real me. If you got a problem with me and Daniel.
Anyone who knows me personally knows I love people. I am a people person. I like being around them. And I've never tried to avoid hanging out with somebody who had different views than me. I actually like. And some of my closest.
But that's just because. I i- is he gonna say that like people around him disagree with him?
Relationships are people that do not think the same of me. They're actually very different and.
I don't believe that. Because like what conversations are you having? Because the general people who do not live in Southern California think NFTs are stupid. Think cryptocurrency is stupid. Yeah. He hasn't. That's the thing though, is like, we're getting at the core. Right, exactly. Like all of this that I'm talking about like is whatever, but like the reality is he has not brought up anything about the person who. Handpicked him to run for city council. And what his beliefs are. The two biggest things about Rob McCoy. That Andreas had a problem with when he made his post is that Rob McCoy is anti-gay. And is pro-life and these are two things that Mikey has conveniently avoided this entire time.
Conversation we we have together is always amazing. So because I'm a people person, uh, I I've got friends on. On every side, right, left, center, and probably the majority of them are political at all. And for some people that could be difficult. I know there's people on the right that think people on the left are evil and vice versa. For me, I never wanted, whether it's faith, ideology, income, anything to divide. Me from having a relationship with somebody else. And the other thing, I just enjoy talking with people. So I know that's a problem for some. That unfortunately is my personality, uh.
Well, the thing is, is that you can have a conversation with anyone all you want, but when you are on a fireside chat. With a pastor who runs the religious sector of. A political movement. That is co-run by somebody who is very racist, very homophobic, very transphobic. Yeah, exactly. Like i- it's. No, like, that's not what the, yeah, exactly. Like, it's not.
Anything else that, uh, I I'm seeing online, uh, it's usually never anything I've said or done. So, uh.
Well, no, it's it's not necessarily things that you've done. It's the people that you are associated with. So it might not be what you believe personally, but it's the things that people who you hang out with. Believe personally. And there are things that if you disagree with them. Hanging out with them is pretty non-negotiable, especially how strongly they believe them. Call me old-fashioned, but if I have a friend, relative, etc., who says some wildly out-of-pocket shit, I don't talk to them anymore. Yeah, no, I. It's like, cause I have coworkers too. I live, I work in a space that's very like not political at all. And there are tons of like. Like there's somebody who the first day I started working there, like felt the need to tell me that like she didn't get. Any like COVID vaccines because she was like. It was all about like the politicians and the pharmaceutical companies and all this shit. And it's just like, you fucking sell screws for a living. Shut the fuck up. Like it's, that's the whole thing. I I don't really enjoy talking to that person anymore because like. When you say something that makes no sense at all, it's not even something that I disagree with. It's just like. Very clearly, this is what these people say and no one else. So like, I'm not even interested in like. Having a conversation more than hi, how are you anymore because I have to. Legitimately. Like, and like, like what you're saying, Mikey's hanging out with a guy. Who regularly hangs out with Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk, it's 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 not just some random like pastor guy like, and this pastor guy even when in the first place is very, very homophobic. So like. Oh, yeah, no, jokes are completely fine. Yeah, people who earnestly hate like anyone. It's, yeah, exactly.
Uh, please, if if it's something I've said or done, then correct. That is open for conversation. I'm gonna leave the comments open. What I would ask is regardless of your perspective, don't attack people. I I I think. I I really want, and this may be naive, us to get back to a place where. We can be in a community together with different views and we're no longer enemies. We're actually friends again. And going back to how it used to be, I never knew any of my friends' political views. We were just friends. Uh, I miss that. So all I would ask is, uh, just have respect in the comments when you're talking to somebody of different opinion. This skate account posted.
This isn't your average everyday. We just like disagree, bro. I miss when everyone was a right crush. Yeah, exactly. I miss when things were like this. Um, my city has a lot of crime in it and I want to combat crime. Uh. Freedom of speech, uh. Everybody thinks that like I'm evil. These are all, you're not helping your case. Neither Justin, Daniel, yeah, okay, here's useless wood knowledge right here. Neither Justin, Daniel nor Clint made that post. My name is Andreas. For the record, Mikey, can you please tell me if you oppose abortion and gay marriage? Can we look and see? Who gives a shit is what somebody replied, maybe the voters of Thousand Oaks, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, yeah, the P rod, this is why I love you. Um, but I'm not seeing a reply here at all. From. Here's, here's the thing. I don't even wanna read any of this stuff. I the 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 whole thing, I don't wanna read anyone's exact words. I just wanted to see if Mikey ever responded. Because here's the thing, people who are pro-choice and. Pro queer in any way, shape or form are usually so annoyingly so annoying is the word that these people would use, by the way. But they're so like annoying about their beliefs to these people. So like, he would say something about it if he were. You know, pro queer and pro-abortion and all these things, but he's not. He's dodging the question. He's avoiding it like the plague. Therefore, he. Probably is. Anti-abortion. I don't know about anti-gay off the top of my head. I I can't make a judgment on that. Um. But I can make a judgment on the abortion thing because he is not saying anything about it. Jaron, love you. See, it's it's nightclub people. It's nightclub people. Adrian Lopez. Never fucking watching misled youth again. Fucking god damn it. Other people trying to do it and there's gonna be no reply. Do you have any evidence of Mikey ever discriminating someone because of their sexuality? And I don't see why anyone, blah, 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 blah. Because people who are. Pro a woman's right to choose and pro-gay marriage are unabashedly so. That's why, that's why people are bringing this up. When you are running for office in any capacity, people do vote for you based on these types of things. Regardless of what position you are in, because a lot of the time. He when when he, and even when he's talking about like land use and budgeting and all those sorts of things, what do you think that those are for? Just throwing money around, whatever. Putting in a new bakery, whatever. The it, is that all it's for? No, it is for these other causes too. So like voting for somebody who is anti-abortion and anti-gay marriage is preferable to people. Who those are important causes. So knowing somebody's stances on those things when they're going to vote for them. Regardless of the position. That they are running for. Is. Pretty important because it decides like everything. Yeah, it it. It's not ever gonna get. City council is political and absolutely partisan. Homelessness and crime are certainly political and in this day and age of hyper-partisanship. It's crucial to identity where you fall in ideology and provide reasons for your stances. Exactly. This is what Threem said earlier. Look, man, I don't want this to be like a two-hour video, but at the end of the day, the entire thing is. Mikey Taylor is not. Actually responding to the criticisms. Though the real heart of the issue, he was handpicked by somebody who is very. Pro-life, very anti-gay and butts heads and works with Charlie Kirk. Consistently. That's who this guy was handpicked by. Knowing what he. Actually stands for is quite important. And since he's not saying anything, it's safe to assume he doesn't stand for anything. And clearly from this video is not smart enough to even run for public office. And that's it. Don't vote for Mikey Taylor and. I hope I don't have to see this guy again, except for in the like three skate videos he's in. So like. Yeah, that that's it. Uh, goodbye. So yeah, don't vote for Mikey Taylor. And, uh, I think I'm gonna wrap up this segment right here. Uh, thanks for watching this. I recorded this live. On my Twitch stream. Go to twitch.tv slash Van Kirk with a one. If you want to see more stuff like this live along with me just watching skateboarding and talking shit. Uh, have a good one. Uh, goodbye. Fuck Mikey Taylor.